Would you like some water?
Test the dumb thing.
Yeah.
Mayor, are we ready?
Okay. Here's our... You ready?
Sure.
Okay, we're back to open session. Okay.
Get hooked in.
Okay, you said... All right. We're back to open session. This part will have a personnel hearing pertaining to a fire department employee, Mr. Joseph Teasley. The commission has agreed to hear your request. I'm supposed to advise Mr. Teasley that we have a certain procedure that we'll follow here and that you'll be able to present evidence in support of the problem resolution, but that the evidence should be focused solely on the issue of reopening the application process to fill the fire marshal's position. The procedure we will follow is that City Manager, Mr. Fred Goins, will be called to testify. He will be sworn in by the city attorney prior to his testimony. Then Mr. Goins will testify. The commissioners would all would have opportunity to ask him questions. Then Mr. Randy Donahue, Human Resources Director, will be called to testify. He will be sworn in by the city attorney prior to his testimony, and then the commission will have opportunity to question Mr. Donahue. Then Mr. Teasley will be called to testify, and he will be sworn in as the city attorney prior to his testimony. And after Mr. Teasley's testimony, the city commission may go into closed session to deliberate. And that's the process we will follow. Okay, so, Mr. Moore, do you take Mr. Goins? Make any comments you need to make.
If we could call Mr. Goins to the stand and... Ramona, is it the city commission's pleasure to have Mr. Goins sit where he is or do you all have him at the podium?
More than having him sit where he is.
It'd help me a lot without my hearing coming.
Okay. One thing, Mr. Teasley, is that after Mr. Goins has testified and the commission has had the opportunity to ask him questions, you also will be given an opportunity to ask him questions. Okay? Mr. Goins, if you raise your right hand, do you swear in firm that you'll tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name, and if you would discuss Mr. Teasley's problem resolution complaint.
Thank you. My name's Fred Goins, and I'm city manager. Mr. Teasley's one of our firefighters, and he is requesting that we... There was a position of fire marshal that came open as a result of a retirement, and the position was internally advertised, although it didn't have to be, but the position is not a promotion, it is a duty assignment, commonly referred to as duty assignment, by the fire chief. But it was internally offered in order to find out who would be interested and what their qualifications might be. And subsequent to that, the ordinance that it falls under was revised, and the pay grade was changed, and some clarifications were made in that ordinance. And so after that change was made, the position was re-advertised internally once again. And firefighter Teasley's contention is that only the applicants who applied at the first advertisement period should be considered for the job. And after discussing the matter with our Human Resources Director and our fire chief, I made the determination that we needed as large of a pool of applicants as we could. And since the pay grade had changed and the salary had gone up for this, there might be additional people who would be interested in holding this position. So I made a determination that I thought it would be in the best interest of the city to accept the new applicants and to go on with consideration of those particular firefighters for this consideration for being appointed to the fire marshal by the fire chief. And of course, it's important to remember the distinction of this is not a promotion, this is a duty assignment. So this particular position is at the discretion of the fire chief, and the applicants would not have a step-by-step process that they would go through like they would for a promotion. They would not be tested and interviewed and under the civil service and so forth. So the revised Chapter 40 changed things considerably. It raised the salary and specified that a person holding the fire marshal's position would be prohibited from promotion, so they'd take themselves out of the promotion pool. And these changes really were discussed with the... At the crew meetings and seemed to have consensus of support. So at the same time, while the positions, not only that position, but several other positions, administrative type positions in the fire service, were open, and having them open really helped us on our budget because it saved money on paying those particular And that's just how I would introduce the matter.
Mr. Goins, you indicated that this is under the old ordinance, which was 40.37B, that the position of fire marshal was a duty assignment versus a promotion. Is the reason why that makes a difference because when you do a promotion, it's about a four-month-long process?
Four or five months.
Who would be better to talk about the actual parts of that four- or five-month-long process? You or Mr. Donahue?
Mr. Donahue.
What about difference in pay? Who would be better to discuss that? You or Mr. Donahue?
There's significant difference, but Mr. Donahue knows the specific pay grades.
When you made this decision, Mr. Goins, did you have any... Or strike that, did you make your decision based at all on who was applying for the position?
No, as a matter of fact, I don't think I even had the names available to me, and I probably would not have known them personally anyway. I would try to do it as a professional decision.
Do you know whether, as a result of re-advertising, so to speak, the position, more people applied to fill it?
No, I don't even know that. I'm sorry.
That's all the questions I have for Mr. Goins. I'm sure the members of the commission may have questions.
We should never like to question Mr. Goins.
I have no questions at this point.
At this point, no. Okay. Saying done.
Mr. Teasley, do you have any questions for the city manager?
Yes, I do.
If you could stand at the podium, Mr. Teasley, so your testimony or your questions could be recorded.
You don't just want me to...
The only thing we'd ask Mr. Teasley is if you'd speak loudly.
Okay. Just a few questions. Mr. Goins, on the original job application memorandum, the internal posting, there was a deadline of July 22, 4:00 p.m., Friday, for all applications to be submitted. Did that factor in any part of your decision, that there was a deadline set?
Yes, it did. And, you know, I have a background in personnel, and I know that deadlines are very important. So for that particular posting, yes, I consider that an important date and time.
Okay. In what regard? As the decision was overturned, you know, it was passed on, that deadline didn't mean much or...
The revision of Chapter 40 was... And 37 was in process. And so as that... The meetings with the different crew chiefs, I understand, were bringing the needed revisions more into focus. And so based on the feedback from the crew chief meetings, not the crew chief meetings, but the crew meetings, I was understanding that revisions were being considered, you know, that would make significant change to mostly the pay scale.
Okay.
And so if the job appointment was at the discretion of the fire chief, then I considered it his... He was empowered to make the decision not only to fill the position, but to not fill the position if he decided not to.
Okay. So just to be clear, you were in favor of supporting a decision to delay a process to get the Chapter 40 revisions completed?
Yes, well, we wanted the revisions made.
Okay. So you were in favor of delaying the process to get the Chapter 40 revisions completed?
Yes.
Okay.
And can I ask, just to clarify your question, Mr. Teasley, when you say in favor of delaying the process, does that mean I've delayed the process of appointing someone to fill the fire marshal position?
Yes. Yeah.
Not to delay the process to amend Chapter 40?
No, no. Just for the... And the reason I asked that is, just a few months prior, there was a case very, very similar to where a process was delayed to wait on the Chapter 40 revisions, and then it was voted on by the commission to go ahead and allow that process to continue under the old Chapter 40. That's why I'm generating that question.
I think the significant difference is, you know, one position or group of positions were promotional positions which take four to six months. And this particular position is a duty assignment which can be made quickly.
Well, just for clarification, you say four to five months for a promotional process. At this point, when that decision was made, at this point, we were eight months in from after the interviews that we had already had, just for a little clarification. I'll move on.
I'm sorry, he needs to give a verbal answer.
Oh, that's my understanding. To the best of my knowledge, I would agree with that.
There was a question asked by Mr. Moore, if you knew how many applicants, how many more applicants you were able to draw by reposting the position, and you stated you didn't know. Just for the record, I believe there was four. Is that correct, Chief? Four?
Well, ask Mr. Colak here.
Okay. Another issue was, you said that pay grade had been changed, and that is true, and that you felt... Let me get your letter here. In your response, you stated that since the pay grade had been changed, you felt that reopening the application process would allow candidates to make a better determination of their interest now that the revisions had been adopted. So somebody that would have put in for the job last year may or may not put in for it now that there's more money involved.
Right. And with other considerations that, I think it was clarified in the discussions with the crew discussions, it was clarified that whoever took this job would be... Would have non-hazardous pay and also would be not eligible for promotional pools. So those are actually three things that were clarified or changed that might make a significant difference in a person's interest in this job.
Okay. We touched base on that in the first interviews too, but we'll get to that.
Okay.
I have a handout for the commission real quick. If I could just give this out, and then you can retain these through my later testimony. And I will have one more question.
Do you want me to hand them out for you?
No, I'll get it. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a...
You don't have one more copy, do you?
Just one that I'm working off of.
Okay, I'll see you in a couple minutes.
Okay. I'm sorry, I wasn't exactly sure how many people would be in here. The next question, this is just an item list of information that I have. If everybody can go ahead and turn to page 15. This is the Chapter 37.02, it's the definitions, and I believe Mr. Moore was handing around to this just a moment ago. Mr. Goins stated two times, this is not a promotion. And it was also stated, in the chief's response to me, underlined, it is not a promotion. On page 15, you can see the city's definition of the word "promotion." Promotion is a change from a position in one pay grade to a different position having a higher maximum rate of pay, just for some clarification. And that's my last response.
I guess I've got one more question for the city manager. This is, we're just questioning the city manager right now. You testified that your decision to extend, and please correct me if I'm wrong, your decision to extend the, I guess, the deadline for filling this position or for receiving applications was not based on your knowledge or perception of the individuals who had already applied for it?
That's correct.
Did any body else, I guess the other folks involved in these decisions would include the fire chief and the human resources director, did anybody else express concerns to you at any point through this process that the folks who had applied wouldn't be well-suited for this position?
Yes, at some point, the chief expressed that he didn't think the skill sets matched the job.
Do you have an idea or recollection about at what point in this timeframe that opinion was expressed? Even roughly?
Yeah, if you can bear with me, just...
Sure.
I'm sorry, I didn't find that where I thought I would. You know, he expressed to me in an email, I asked him to explain why the delay in hiring this position, and in a memorandum dated March 19, he laid out the reasons and kind of made a... Explained that he, "I plan to appoint the best qualified applicant." I have assumed... He had assumed the critical portions of the job himself and saved the city considerable salary and benefits during that time period.
Thanks. That's all I got.
Any other questions?
May I add one thing? This is, I mean, it's just kind of technical, I guess, but this is considered a temporary appointment. So whoever would be appointed, you know, three months later, or six months later, or a year later, they could be replaced by someone else or taken out of the position. Am I correct in saying that, Mr. Donahue?
Yes. I would point out that the ordinance gives the fire chief the authority to reassign the individual that's in the fire marshal position, subject to the approval of the city manager and also the board of commissioners.
So it's subject to that approval?
That's correct. That's correct. Are there any questions after that?
That wouldn't be... That's not the same as a duty assignment. If it's subject to the board of commissioners or the city manager, is that correct interpretation of that?
I still think that's a duty assignment.
But not a traditional duty assignment like you...
But the ordinance specifically indicates that it's a duty assignment.
Okay. Thank you.
The ordinance specifically indicates that. Randy, Mr. Donahue? You could raise your right hand if you swear on telling the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name.
Randy Donahue.
Mr. Donahue, you're familiar with Mr. Teasley's request for a hearing on this issue of the reposting of the fire marshal position, correct?
I am.
Did you work with the city manager to provide him information to help him in responding to the request for review by Mr. Teasley?
I do. Generally, when a... Any problem resolution that's filed within the city, if it goes beyond the department head level and comes to the city manager, the city manager will... If the department head hadn't already given me a copy for a heads-up, the city manager will bring it to me and we'll work together on drafting a response to that, talk through the issue, determine the appropriate action to be taken.
If you could, I think that one of the primary issues that the commission may have in this situation is the fact that the promotional process that was implemented in Chapter 40 did not require people that were eligible for promotion to go through the process again. Yet, the fire marshal position, that's going to be... That position is going to be re-advertised, and the people that had applied for it previously would have to reapply. So arguably, there is a differing standard for those two positions, one promotion versus, number two, the position of fire marshal. So if you could address the issues that are raised with respect to the fire marshal position versus the normal promotional process changes that were made in Chapter 40?
My interpretation, at least of Chapter 40, for the promotional process, Mr. Teasley pointed out the definition of promotion in Chapter 37, which governs most city employees unless they're in the civil service, and the civil service, Chapter 40, sort of trumps it as far as the civil service appointment and promotion process. So to me, the civil service board process is very different than the duty assignment. The promotional process for civil service is for the ranks of sergeant, lieutenant, captain, and battalion chief. Does it go to assistant director or assistant chief? That's not happened since I've been here. So the duty assignment one is specifically... Those sections of the ordinance are specifically geared to fire marshal, public education officer, training officer, and EMS director. And the processes are completely different. And I think this has been touched on by Mr. Goins already, but the duty assignments are a fire chief decision, and the ordinance, I think, clearly says that, that it's a discretion who he puts in them and whether he puts anybody in them. The public education officer is still open, and I think it's his intent to leave it open. The civil service process, on the other hand, is detailed, step by step by step by step in the ordinance. What happens, when it happens, how much it's weighted, what's taken into consideration, what's not taken into consideration. They're just two separate processes, two separate things. And I understand that it may be easy to say, well, we should do these things just the same way, or the same thing should apply, but they are two different things, and sometimes you can't do that with apples and oranges. In my mind, this whole thing came down to, it's been a year. Should we repost it or should we go on? Given that things have changed, and I don't know, maybe even if things hadn't changed, it may have been my opinion that it made sense to repost it. People become interested, people... People become interested, people lose interest, people achieve qualifications, people may lose qualifications, and then if you're going to be looking at a different pool of applicants, why not look at the pool that you know has all the facts and have expressed an interest in the job? But that, you know, there's no hard, fast rule for that. I think that's just a matter of feel. And I think if it was the job at the front desk of city hall, if we advertised it today and decided not to fill it, but then next year, with the new budget in 2013, 2014, we decided we would, I think we would repost it, because there could be a different set of applicants that would be interested and qualified.
Mr. Goins indicated that under the promotion process, it, it takes four to six months. Is that an accurate description of the time it takes for the promotion process for the civil, people that are out of the civil service?
The promotion may be three or four months, the appointment process probably four or five months. By the time you start talking about dates, setting your application deadline during the preliminary review of the, of the applications, and getting the civil service board involved, and finding a date that you can get a quote for them, and doing assessments and getting the scores, giving a written test and getting the scores, and determining where people are in the process, yeah, three or four months for promotion probably, four to six for appointments. But it is a long, drawn-out process from the time we start it until the time we finish it.
Now, you've confused me a little bit. You've mentioned three or four months of promotion, and then four to six months for appointment. Do you mean that the people that have gone through the civil service process that become eligible for promotion, within the next couple of months, they would be appointed to positions that would be eligible?
We maintain an eligibility list for promotions, and I believe the way both the old chapter 40 and the new chapter 40 reads is, it's in place until there's a new list. Chief may know more about that. We've, to my knowledge, we've always just broke the process and got a new one before, or it expires, because you use all the candidates off of it. That has happened, I believe, in the time I've been here. But the reason why, and I'm not sure if I exactly hit into where you want me to hit, but one of the things that stretches out the appointment process is CPAT testing, where they have to pass the physical exam, and getting that scheduled, and giving them practice sessions and, and that. On the, on the promotional side, to go on the eligibility list, you have to complete the whole process. Every applicant for the four ranks of management, sergeant, lieutenant, captain, and battalion chief, have to take the written test, have to be, go through their assessment process. You have to determine how many years of longevity they've got, and convert that into points, so that you can come up with a numerical rating, if you will, or numerical score for each candidate that sets the order that they're promoted from the promotional list or appointed from the appointment list. Does that make sense, sir?
Do you still, do you have to go through that process to, to fill the position of fire marshal?
No, and that, that was, I guess, what I was trying to get to earlier. The duty assignments don't have, as far as the ordinance is concerned, anything specific about that process. It just says they're filled at the discretion of the fire chief.
Were there any other factors you think the commission should be aware of with respect to Mr. Teasley's request that you haven't already addressed?
I don't think so. I do remember, you know, Fred cited a memo, I think, from March of this year, but I do remember having conversations with the fire chief last year about the applicant pool at the time, and whether he thought to go ahead, or whether he had a candidate that would really be successful in the job, and, and he wasn't comfortable with any of the candidates from last year. And it wasn't that they didn't meet the minimum.
Did you say it was or wasn't?
Was not. It wasn't that they didn't meet the minimum requirements, but it's a matter of whether they had the skills to be successful in the job. And, you know, and I'm just going to be frank and, and lay it on the table, one of the concerns for Mr. Teasley was his disciplinary record. There had been a reprimand and a suspension within a year and a half of last summer into 2011 posting, and it was a factor in the decision, I think. Now, whether it was the factor or whatever, I can't testify. I just think between the budget pinch and him not having a comfort level, he decided he should push, push the decision. And in my mind, once that decision, once you're a year down the road and things have changed, it made, it was logical to me to, let's post it with the new information and let people make a decision about whether they want to apply. I didn't feel like it inconvenienced the candidates that had applied a year before, because it's, it's a very, very simple form that you apply internally on.
The last question I would have, could you tell the, the commission whether there are any differences in the position under the current chapter 40 provisions in terms of pay, promotional opportunities, that type of thing for the person who fills the fire marshal position?
The compensation rate for fire marshals is very different under the 40, as is the compensation for the other duty assignments, the training officer, EMS director, and the pub ed officer. Under the old ordinance, regardless of your rank, firefighter, one, two, three, sergeant, lieutenant, captain, battalion chief, when you took this job, you got a 9% raise. And you stayed eligible to move up, to change your rank through the promotional process. So to compete for promotions, you may take one of these duties assignments as a firefighter three, and while you're in the position, go through the promotional process and become a sergeant, and a lieutenant, and a captain, and a battalion chief. Under the new chapter 40, the rate is set as equivalent to the rank of captain, I believe. And so if you're a battalion chief now, and you apply for fire marshal, it's a, you have to take a pay cut. If you're a firefighter three, and you get the duty assignment of fire marshal, you would move up that much. If you're a sergeant, you would move up a little less than that. If you're a lieutenant, you'd move up just a little. So it's really, it's a different concept altogether of how, and you're not eligible for promotion under the new chapter. So the compensation and the policies that apply to you in that position a year ago are significantly different than they are now.
What about, I think Mr. Goins mentioned hazardous duty pay, is that a part of the?
It is a part of it. It's, it's a position that we were informed by the retirement system that, and this was an audit, I believe in 2008, that the position, they were not going to change it to non-hazardous at that time, but the next time it was filled, we couldn't fill it as hazardous. And then subsequent to that, we did find a letter in the file that says they had voted to allow it to be grandfathered, but if the job changed in any way, we would have to petition the board of trustees of the Kentucky retirement system in order to determine whether it was hazardous or non-hazardous.
Can I ask one clarification?
Sure, and that was my last question, so you all.
Very good, Jim. By job change in any way, just a quick question on that comment you made, does that mean if the individual in that position changes that that would have to be repetitioned? Or does that mean if maybe the pay scale or some of the description changed?
I, I don't think the pay scale. I think that the, what they were, I believe they meant in the letter, and it's not worded very well. I believe they meant if a new person moved into that position, or we changed any of the duties and responsibilities of that position. That's what I believe they meant, but.
When we originally posted the job, which was before the chapter 40 revision?
In 2011.
2011. Were there any changes to the job description from what it had previously been?
Not to my knowledge.
Had we, as a human research department or the fire department, made any contact to the Kentucky retirement system to determine or gain clarification as to what they meant before we advertised it as non-hazardous?
No, I believe that the city was working under the verbal from Kentucky retirement that said, next time you fill it, it'll have to be non-hazardous. The letter indicated a, maybe some softening of that delivery.
So it would be fair to say that all in all, it was somewhat ambiguous, looking back on it in hindsight, as to whether it would be, because we don't know for sure if what they meant was if the person changed or if the description changed.
Correct, that's true.
So it was somewhat ambiguous, so, but again, no one made a contact to the state retirement board at that time, making decisions?
We talked two weeks ago about trying to get an opinion from them, and some of the things that we weighed into that decision was the fact that the duties that have been added are not hazardous, they're pub ed, as kind of some of the duties from that public education officer that's not being filled. The other factor that factored into it frankly was, there's just not a lot of feeling that the position's hazardous. It's more of an office job or an inspection job, not a fire suppression type of job, and it's really not that different from our building inspector, or our, our electrical inspector, or maybe some things that our code inspectors do. And that, you know, we felt like, from an internal equity standpoint, it made some sense that it be non-hazardous, because it was, the fire marshal's job is a lot closer to those jobs in code enforcement than they are to firefighter jobs, as far as the duties and the hazards involved in that. So that was one piece of it, and the other piece was the budget. It's about a 20 cent on the dollar difference. So for a $50,000 job, you're talking about $10,000 worth of cost per year for it to be hazardous instead of non-hazardous. And given the budget, we could still rather than get that opinion, but I believe that the fire chief and the city manager and I believe that it's probably in our best interest to leave it at non-hazardous.
Certainly. Just a point of clarification, is it the city's, was it within the city's purview or the Kentucky retirement system's purview to determine what jobs are hazardous and non-hazardous?
We request and they determine. I believe it would be the easiest way to say that.
So, so we may request something, but regardless, it's the retirement system's decision whether that's or not. So if, if there is a question, what we're, what I'm hearing now is that, well, we just decided to go this way without necessarily checking to be confident as to what that pay, whether it was hazardous or non-hazardous.
We didn't have that conversation in 2011. We had it two or three weeks ago when all this came up, and frankly, I'd never even seen the letter from Kentucky retirement, or if I saw it, it didn't make sense. It came in, I think, in April or May of 2009, and I'd been here maybe four, five, six weeks, and what I'd been told verbally was that the, the retirement system had just done an audit a few months before, and I'm assuming because there was a big pension reform bill in 2008. So they had done an audit, and the city had been told the fire marshal would not be hazardous duty the next time they filled it.
Do we know?
I didn't really have any reason to question it, to be honest.
Do we know who received that letter when it came in?
It's in the retirement system file in my office. Now, that, I may have seen it, like I said, I may have seen it and not realized what it said, it was poorly worded, or it may have came to my office and got filed without me seeing it. I just don't know.
But we, we do recognize that the fact the letter was there and had been sent to the city's attention to notify them.
Yeah.
You mentioned, you were talking about that there were changes in compensation in the fire marshal position, and that that could affect who would apply and who wouldn't. You mentioned that certain positions that would have been, that are people that were over a captain's rank could actually see a pay cut under the new chapter 40?
Yes.
If that was the case. Were any of these people that applied above the rank of captain at the time?
In 2012?
No, the original application process, when we first posted it in 2011.
I can't say for certain, I'm not sure who applied in 2011. It really wasn't a factor in my, my advice to the city manager, it didn't matter who was applied and who was going to apply, it was, I was making my recommendation based on the fact I thought it had been long enough and enough had changed that it was, it was worth putting it out there again.
And I can certainly understand that, but when, when we're making the argument that compensation is a major reason why someone else would want to apply, and, you know, we're going to repost it because of that, I think one of those factors would have been, at least what I would have considered is, well, is this really going to bring anyone else? Because, I mean, if someone, are, are we going to lose any applicants because of that or whatnot? And one of those questions that I think would be reasonable to ask would be, is any of the people in the current pool that we've entered, gone through, the whole process of taking application, putting deadlines, interviewing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, would, how would those people be affected by such a decision? But I can certainly understand it, if you don't recall.
I really don't know. I do know that while it would be less advantageous for a captain or a B C to apply for the job under the new ordinance, it's more advantageous for a firefighter. And I'm, if I'm remembering my pay grades correctly, a firefighter three under the old ordinance would get 9%, but they would still remain eligible for future promotion. Under the new ordinance, they would get 21%, because it would be just like jumping over the sergeant and lieutenant straight to captain's pay. So it, it helped some applicants by making it more attractive, maybe, it maybe made it less attractive to others.
Sure. During the appointment process, and if you don't have the, if you don't, this is the first time you've ever done a fire marshal position, then rather than based on experience, just your thoughts to the questions that I have would be nice.
Okay.
Typically, in an appointment process such as this, how involved are you with the chief in getting that from start to finish and getting that process done?
Not very, on a duty assignment particularly. The, the positions there, if you ask me if I would participate in the interview, yes, I would say, if you feel like I can add something to your selection process and my calendar allows it, I'd be glad to help. But typically, I don't. And same thing with other departments. If they want me to be involved in their process, I will be, and if they don't want me involved, then I don't force myself into the process.
In this particular instance, how involved would you say you were?
No, I didn't conduct or sit in on the interviews. My only involvement in this was we did, in the past, we've, on fire department duty assignments, we've not posted them citywide, we've just posted them within the fire department. And at some point, over the course of the last few months, we kind of talked about that, and we thought, well, maybe we should post them citywide. It's not likely that there's any candidates from outside the fire department, but it is possible. And if the whole point of posting is to make sure our employees are aware, then why not post it citywide? And in this case, we did. We actually got an applicant from the street department who works in the volunteer fire department, I believe it's volunteer, in Owen County or somewhere. But it was different, and I, you know, I do the city postings, but that was about the extent of my involvement until we had the grievance, and I was asked for my opinion on, and I will say, you know, I do believe the chief probably came to me, I don't know, two or three weeks before the posting, and said, we need to get this posting done, and we talked it through and that, but if you're talking about the selection process, then if you're talking about the administrative process, some.
Was there ever, particularly during 2011, a consulting process of the chief, or were you talking about? Were you talking about whether these applicants were really qualified or met the standards of the job?
I remember him talking about he wasn't real comfortable with it, but I don't recall any specific.
So it was just, you know.
Yeah. And you know, when he filled, you know, I knew he had posted it. We take applications even when it's just posted within the fire department. So he comes and gets the little one-page application. And so I know a job's been posted. And so typically, within a week or two after he comes and gets the applications, I get a sit-down or a memo saying, "We've interviewed candidates for the following position and we've determined that we'd like to make the duty assignment of John Doe on July 3rd." And then I take care of making sure it gets put on the agenda if it's the kind of thing that we put on the agenda, and I can't remember if appointments do or if only terminations do. But I would probably look at the precedent and make that decision that way.
And several open public meetings this commission has had through 2011 and 12, commissioners had requested that this job be filled as quickly as possible. We're here now towards the end of, getting close to the end of our term, the job's still not filled, when applicants applied and was, they were essentially thrown out. Did you ever ask the chief, you know, should, where are we at on this? You know, the commission has requested that this be filled as quickly as possible. Did you have any conversations of that nature?
I mean, I've probably, I mean, we talked about different things that are ongoing. In March, he sent an email that I believe the city manager shared with me at that time. But by then, we were, full into Chapter 40. I think it maybe had already had first reading or is right on the cusp of first reading. If you're talking about before that, we might have had some conversations around July or August that he didn't really feel comfortable with any candidates. And I don't know that it came up again for months after that unless, besides it coming up in commission meetings.
Sure. We had a situation with, during the promotional process, as you probably well remember, where the commission had decided to stop the process. And the administration, not only in the fire administration, but in Human Resources, said that it would be unfair to do that at that moment in time. Because at that moment in time, the people, the applicants and the people that were tested had put so much into it at that point that it just wouldn't be right to do that. In this particular instance though, they went through an interview process, they applied, they had a job posting and a deadline. And they knew at the same time, most likely, I would assume, that the commission had requested that this job be filled as quickly as possible. Now, but yet, it seems to be two standards here. And I understand that one is a promotion and one is a duty assignment. But considering the gravity that the commission had put on this position, how do you think about, I mean, how do we get to the point to where it's okay on this instance to say, "Well, we can throw out the applicants and look elsewhere," versus what we did in the Chapter 40? Knowing the gravity of the situation and that the commission wanted the position filled?
In my mind, one of the determining factors on the promotional process was people that had come to me and said, "I've been busting my hump for two months studying, and it's not fair to put off the process and allow those who have not been busting their hump to study another chance to study. You gave us a date that we were gonna take a written test, and I've been working for it. And I know some other people haven't. And if you delay this, it disadvantages me and gives them more opportunity than everybody else thought they were gonna have. So you're rewarding people that didn't take it serious in the beginning." That complaint from some employees is what made me believe that we had to do that on the promotional process, that we should keep it moving once it was moving. And that's the difference really.
That's all the questions I have. Thank you, ma'am. Thanks, Randy. One else?
I've got two, I'll try to give them real quick. This talk of grandfathering in relation to this position, particularly in terms of hazardous duty, I guess I'm a little unclear on what all would, would or wouldn't be grandfathered. Okay, my specific question is simply, let's say we had hired somebody last year in this position before the changes to Chapter 40 were made. Would they, would that person be eligible for promotion after the changes to Chapter 40 were made? Or would they be grandfathered in under the terms they were hired by?
Under the terms of their duty assignment?
Yeah.
Can I get Chapter 40 and see how it was written? Because I'm not certain, to be honest with you.
Sure.
Chief, do you remember the section for duty assignment? Is that where it's at or is it in the promotion section? While serving in the staff/duty assignment position, an employee shall not be eligible to participate in the promotional process, but shall retain the rank he or she had initially assigned. My reading of that would be, it doesn't mention a grandfather. So when the ordinance becomes effective, it applies at that time.
So somebody could have been hired with the ability to be promoted and then could have lost that ability?
Could have lost that ability when Chapter 40 passes. That's my interpretation, but that might, the city attorney may have a different one.
Is it city policy, this is a general question. I know that folks, you know, looking for work and whatnot submit resumes to us. And we take those resumes regardless of whether or not there's a job opening available. There's obviously a difference between a resume and an application for a specific job. Is it our policy to accept applications for, I mean, let's say we have an internal posting for a job. Is it our policy to accept applications from outside the city if we haven't posted outside the city?
Yes, we do. And just a recent example, quite often, well, instead of a specific example, quite often what happens is.
Unless you're thinking the example's really pertinent. I was asking yesterday, no, or both?
Well, Commissioner, what usually happens is when we posted internally, every employee who has a cousin, an aunt, an uncle, a son, a granddaughter, a whatever that they think might be qualified goes and tells them, "The city's got this job posted. Just want you to go down to City Hall and put in an application in case they don't have anybody inside." So we do take applications and I, without.
My only question.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Several weeks.
Are you done?
All right, thank you.
I just have one question that may spill into a few more questions depending on the answer. But how important is the role of a fire marshal for our city?
I really, I don't know that I'm feel qualified to answer it, Commissioner Hayden.
Okay.
I mean, it sounds important to me. Obviously, I hope it's important because I hope we don't have people doing unimportant things. But fire prevention seems to me like it's something we should try to do.
And I guess the only thing that comes with that is, what sort of liability risk are we put in our city by not having an official fire marshal? I know the chief has said a few times that he is the acting fire marshal, has been doing that for the last, for the last year, which he has the full capability to do that with his job description. I'm just wondering if we're putting our city at any risk, liability reasons, without having an official fire marshal?
You know, I would assume you could make that case. But just like they could say that by not having 82 firemen and only having 73, or by not having Chief Will Hoyt's 68 policemen, we only have 62, that, you know, it does open the door to that discussion, I suppose, yeah.
That's my only question.
That would be the information that the city would present to the board commissioners. So at this point, it would be, Mr. Teasley, do you have any questions for Mr. Donaghy first? And then after those questions, Mr. Teasley would then present the information that he wishes to do.
Yes, I have a question. Would you like him to stay up here?
Sure, yes. If you, y'all might share in the podium?
No.
We're the show, hey, man.
Sure can.
Might be a little crowded, but we'll get to it.
You are a confusing guy, I'll tell you. You got me confused.
You say that, you say that like it's a bad thing.
Okay, where, where do I begin? All right. Number one, I would just like to state for the record, this problem resolution form was not about me getting the position. Therefore, I feel very uncomfortable with my disciplinary record being brought up in front of everybody. It was about the three candidates that put in for the job. It's not solely about me. So I'd just like to say that right off the bat. Okay, the handout I gave you guys earlier, if you can turn to page 12.
Mr. Teasley?
Yes.
This is your opportunity to ask Mr. Donaghy questions.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask him a question about an appointment. You know, we keep talking about appointments and you brought up appointment too. In that same list of definitions, the appointment definition is the designation of a person by a due authority to become an officer or employee in a position and his induction into employment into that position. Now, you were talking about appointment, a true appointment, and you were talking about the field, the way you feel, your interpretation of things. Well, my interpretation of an appointment is the actual ceremonial putting of somebody in the position. When we have promotions, you know, they test, they get top of the list. They have to wait on appointment. They're sitting on a list, they're sitting there waiting to be appointed. And then the actual appointment takes place. Can you address that just a little bit further? Because the way I interpret it, an appointment is nothing more than just a ceremonial thing.
I think the definition, part of the definitions in Chapter 37 are there to try to define them as they're used in Chapter 37. And I'm not sure I understand the question, but to me, an appointment's a hire. When you hire someone, you appoint someone. And I don't know if I get to what you're asking for, Joe, but I'll be glad to try again.
Well, it would just be the same on anything. When you hire somebody, you appoint them. You said it right there, okay? An appointment, would you consider that if I were to say, "Hey, Randy, congratulations, you're fire marshal now." Sorry, even if you wanted it or not, sorry, I don't, it's your job. To me, that's a true appointment.
I think the term appointment in Chapter 37, maybe I should rephrase, means initial hire typically, or original hire. And that actions of moving employees after they're on board would be promotions, demotions, transfers, in Chapter 40 duty assignment. But I think, and it doesn't say original appointment or original hire, but I think that when you look at the word appointment as it's used, after the definition in Chapter 40, it's talking about the initial hiring of a person.
Okay. You stated also that you felt the new candidate pool was appropriate. In my mind, and the reason we're here, it was not. The three candidates should have been the only candidates. That's what I'm standing up here on the platform. Could we not have just, in my mind, when we were ready to fill it, you re-interview the guys? You talked about they may have interest, somebody else may have, they may have become uninterested. Could we not just brought the three guys back in and said, "Hey, we just, we're getting ready to fill this thing, we know it's been a while, we just wanna make sure that you're still, you're still interested." There was no correspondence or anything with any of us over the last year whatsoever regarding this.
I apologize for the lack of correspondence. And it's, like I said earlier, I wasn't really involved in the interview process last year or this year. We could have went to the three applicants, considered, "Are you still interested? And if you are, okay, we'll just take your forms from last year and put them in." But that wouldn't have told us if there were new people interested if we had just done that. And it wouldn't have given the three candidates the chance to update their resumes if they had continued college or if they had got a new certification or, I mean, we could have, sure, if that was your question. We could have done it that way, I just didn't, and it's just an opinion.
Right.
That I thought it was in the city's best interest to be open and to put a posting back out there.
There was also a statement about an email on March, sometime in March, I can't remember the exact date, March 18th, is that, I think that's what it was. In which chief, I don't know, did he email you or was it city manager Goins regarding the?
A memo to city manager Goins.
Okay. That he was unsure about our skill set for the job. You know, that it didn't feel comfortable. I'm just kinda curious, I mean, all three applicants were more than qualified. The way the qualifications were, anybody that worked for the fire department would be qualified. Anybody that was employed at the fire department. You didn't have to have all the particular certifications until 12 months after. You had a year to get them. Why were we not informed? If he was feeling inadequate with our skill set, why were we not informed? And then why were we allowed to reapply? That doesn't make any sense to me. If I'm not qualified for a job, why do you want me to reapply for it? That's a waste of your time, my time. It just seems, it seems crazy.
Well, you know, my statement was, all the applicants met the minimum requirements. And there's a difference between meets the minimum requirements and is a good fit for the job. Any of the candidates could have been, I assume, I don't know if they met the requirements or not because I wasn't involved. They could have been assigned the job at the fire chief's discretion. And they might have succeeded and they might have failed. But I think the bottom line came down that he didn't feel like they would, they would be likely to succeed in the role.
Okay. Try to make this one brief. We were talking about, I think you were asked a question by Commissioner Wilder about grandfathering in and would this thing, you know, if somebody were hired last year under a certain set of rules, would they be grandfathered in the new set? And I agree with you, they probably wouldn't, you know? The thing about it is, is in our interview, in our initial interview, myself, Sergeant Kenny Barnett and firefighter Richard Frost, who are on this problem resolution forum as well, firefighter Frost is here tonight, we were all told about these changes coming down. And we were all asked if we would be okay with them. We were all told, "I wanna make this into a non-promotional spot. We wanna get a set pay grade." All these things were told to us and nobody withdrew their name. They were fine with it. And I just, you know, that's kinda confusing to me on the grandfather issue because we were told about every change. Every change that was gonna be implemented and that they were trying to work on, we knew about. Can you address that?
I don't think it was possible that we knew ever changed the Chapter 40 in July of 2011.
Regarding the fire marshal? Regarding the fire marshal question.
Maybe, I, I don't know. We worked on Chapter forty feverishly for two months early this year, and things changed. And I, but I can't say that section did, I really can't. I just know that in July two thousand and eleven, we knew we were gonna do it, but we didn't have our hands around it yet. And maybe it wouldn't have changed anybody's mind. And to me, it all just comes back to, it'd been a year. And.
That, that was of no fault of ours.
I, I would agree, but it, if the purpose of posting jobs is to make sure employees are aware that you're getting ready to take an action and give them the opportunity, reposting it, I hate to say the words, was a more open and transparent process than not telling our employees that, hey, we're getting ready to take an action here, and if you're interested, throw your hat in the ring, if you're not interested, don't apply. And I, I hate to use that terminology, because I don't, I don't always barge on that, but.
Can I make a comment?
If you have questions, that'd be, you know, the, I guess, the, one of the issues, I understand Mr. Teasley is asking some questions of, of Mr. Donahue, but the appropriate time to ask a question, Mr. Donahue, would be when Mr. Teasley's down.
Thank you. I'll withdraw my question.
I had one more question, though.
That's all right.
Do you wanna let the commissioner go?
Yes, and then you can.
Yeah. Because I lost it.
I guess my question is, I mean, you keep, keep pointing to the fact, well, it had been a year since it had been posted, and we felt it would just be right to open it up. Had, during that year, were there any, especially towards the end of the year, were there any, any correspondence to, to the firefighters who had applied for this position, that this is what we're considering, uh, here's why we, we haven't made a decision yet? Or was there indication made by the administration that, yeah, we're gonna fill it just, you know, in a week or two, or let me finish this and we're gonna fill it at that point? Because to me, it seems rather unfair to the people that applied for the position to kinda let this hang out in limbo for a whole year. These people who had prepared and went through an interview process, and probably had to have some significant discussions with their family as to if they were gonna consider themselves for, uh, that position. It seems rather unfair and inefficient among the administration. And to me, I, I, I don't think that this was the case, but it could be perceived somewhat disingenuously, that, uh, for this to hang out in limbo for a year.
I, I can't speak for anyone other than myself, and I, I didn't send any correspondence, I didn't even know who had applied, to be honest, in two thousand and eleven.
And not aware of any correspondence?
Yeah, I mean, they came in my office, or came in Tammy's office and filled out an application, but I'd, I, I honestly, if somebody said how many people applied in two thousand and eleven, I, I wouldn't have known. Then I might be able to tell you now, because we've been looking at this recently, but at that time, I didn't. And I, and I can't speak for whether there was any communication inside the fire department or not, but we were sort of outside that process.
That's all the questions I have.
I just have some more. I believe the city solicitor mentioned that this is gonna conclude the administration's presentation of, of information. A lot of the answers you're giving us boil down to, well, I don't know, I wasn't involved in that, I wasn't involved, you know, throughout that, that process. Do you have any idea why we're talking to you and not the chief right now? Why, do you know why we're not talking to the chief today?
I, I assume that the commission can request the chief, I don't, that's probably a question for. See, I'm a Chapter forty, I was responsible for putting the finishing touches on it.
Sure.
And, and the reason for that, Commissioner Wilder, is because Mr. Donahue discussed this with the city manager. And of course, the city manager's decision is the one that's being reviewed. And so that's because it was Mr. Donahue and, and the city manager that made the decision, that's why they're the ones that are providing the information. And certainly, the chief's here, if you have any questions for him.
Am I correct in understanding that the, that this, this being, like, the nature of this appointment? Am I correct in understanding this is the, the final decision on who to hire is the chief? Is the fire chief? Or who to, not hire, but who to?
The duty assignment.
Who to assign?
Let me get. I, I believe that he makes the appointment, and somebody can be removed with the approval of the board, but let me read it and see what. At the discretion of the fire chief, these positions may be filled from applicants meeting the qualifications as required by the job description from within or outside of the fire department ranks. He classified as civilian. The person shall serve under the direction of the fire chief and shall perform the duties as may be assigned, subject to the policies and procedures of the fire department where applicable.
You heard testimony earlier, I believe, I guess from the city manager, that the decision on who to hire is the chief's?
I believe it's the chief's discretion, whether to fill it and who to fill it with. I, I think it's different than a civil service process.
I believe that he appoints them and then brings them in front of the board to, for approval. I, I believe that's what I think.
Do you have eighty-three? I think that might be in eighty-three. But you don't have to, I just, I think it's probably, I think it might be there.
I guess I'll, I'll just direct the question outside to Fred. It wa- it wasn't your understanding, Fred, that you had to choose the, it was, it was not your understanding that you had to choose the person who had filled this position? It was your understanding that that was the chief's decision?
That, uh, that's my understanding, and it spins on the definition of discretion. But, but my understanding, the word discretion is, says it is at the fire chief's discretion.
I think that's pretty cut and dry, but.
At the very least, that was, that was the administration's understanding.
Yes.
That was my understanding.
I didn't, I, I don't, I mean, I'm sure the fire chief, at some point, when he makes a duty assignment, informs the city manager who the training officer is, or who the fire marshal is. And I, I really don't know about their process. The city manager could obviously overrule him as the chain of command, but I think the city manager would probably also have to have some pretty.
I think the administration, everybody, we're hearing everybody in the administration agree that this assignment was at the chief's discretion. And I think we've also heard testimony that you and the city manager were aware that the chief didn't feel that these particular candidates were well-suited for the position.
I testified that the fire chief told me he wasn't particularly.
Right.
But I did not look at their qualifications and.
Understood, understood, so I'll ask that question again. We're, we're getting lots and lots of information, really simple questions. So I'll, I'll just ask it again for a simple answer. It was your understanding, and we heard this from the city manager as well, that the chief, who makes this assignment at his discretion, did not feel that this particular applicant pool was well-suited?
Yes.
You were aware of that, did, did you, did you ever communicate?
To the candidates, no.
Communicate to the candidates?
Anyway, in their, I.
Did, did you invite them to reapply?
We reposted it.
Reposted it.
And I think it may have said that candidates that previously applied should, if you're still interested, should.
Should apply.
Should reapply.
And there was no caveat, but the person who makes the decision doesn't think you're well-suited, so you might as well not bother? Nobody was, nobody was told that?
No, I mean, like I said, people could've got certifications, or, we all grow, I think, in time too.
That's all.
I have, uh, I, I remember the question that I was, this is, this is just an ethical question. Uh, it's just an opinion-based question. If we had a deadline for a job, let's, let's say outside, you know, we posted it outside of the city, and we had a deadline of, of, of tomorrow, that was the, the finishing deadline, and we had accepted, you know, I don't know, four or five resumes for the job. The deadline goes by, and a week or two later, some guy runs in, he's really qualified, and he goes, man, I just couldn't make the deadline, I, I couldn't do it, sorry, I mean, here it is, I, I'd really like to apply for this job. Would we allow him to apply?
I would say it would depend on where we were in the process. If we'd already conducted interviews, no. If we hadn't even started, maybe. If it was just a, a extremely qualified candidate, limiting the pool wouldn't be in our best interest either. But there is the deadline, and you hate to wait.
Well, that's, that's the thing, it's all in the deadline.
Yeah, if we, but I will say, I'm not saying wrong, that if we were gonna fill it a year later, we would set a new deadline, and we would probably re-advertize or reapply.
No, I mean, that wasn't the question. It, it was, would you accept a resume from a guy who's running two weeks late, getting his resume? And it all goes back to, can he follow directions? No, obviously not, he didn't get it in in time. But yet, we're gonna, we're gonna say, hey, yeah, come on, put it in.
Oh, good. Was that the last question?
Yeah, it was close to the last.
Can I ask one of Mr. Donahue?
Sure, sure.
And that is, uh, Mr. Donahue, were you familiar with the, uh, the emails from, from Chief Positsch to Mr. Teasley on September the twenty-second? Which is page five of Mr. Teasley's package addressed to the commission, as well as Chief Positsch's email to a number of individuals on January the eighteenth, twenty-twelve, which is page six of the commission's package.
I, I don't remember seeing number four.
That's all I have for now.
Uh, Mr. Teasley? That's the information that the city was gonna provide from the city manager and from Mr. Donahue. And now it's your opportunity to call witnesses and to present evidence in addition to the package of information that you provided to the commission. And of course, you've already asked questions of Mr. Goins, the city manager, and Mr. Donahue.
Yes. Can, can they be recalled also, at any time?
If you have additional questions.
Okay, okay. I was just curious, I'm still learning the rules of the, the game here.
No, that's fine, you know, the, the purpose is to put the information front of the commission so they can make a decision based on all relevant factors.
Okay. I'm assuming everybody has a copy of the, uh, problem resolution complaint form, and the papers that are attached with that as well. I'll just, I'll just start from the beginning, I'm not gonna read straight from this thing, I'm just gonna tell you how it went down.
And let me, uh, Mr. Teasley, the way it normally works is that if you have additional questions for any individuals, you would ask those questions now, and then, once you're done asking questions, then at that point, you would have the opportunity to review the information that you submitted, and then the commission would have the opportunity to ask you to clarify the question.
Okay, so it's my turn to proceed? I, I don't have any other questions?
Yes.
Okay. July eleventh, two thousand and eleven, page one of the index that I gave the commission. Internal job posting came out for the position of fire marshal. I've highlighted it, showing the deadline, applications at the bottom for the position will be accepted by the fire chief until four P.M., July twenty-second, two thousand and eleven. To my knowledge, there were three candidates that put in for the job. Uh, that would be Sergeant Kenny Barnett, firefighter Richard Frost, and myself. If, if the second, uh, the highlighted part above there says, this is a duty assignment as authorized and described by City Ordinance forty-point-three-six. Now this, keep in mind, this was two thousand and eleven, this was before the revised Chapter forty. If you can go back to page ten, you'll see a copy of the forty-point-three-six, addressing the fire and safety inspector, which is fire marshal, fire training officer, emergency medical services director. Section two there, at the bottom, was changed in the new one, but in the old one reads, these positions shall be filled from within the ranks of the fire department if practicable through established personnel selection procedures. So that was the rule governing this position at the time. We interviewed, uh, we were called for interviews, uh, by, I believe by the second week of August, everybody had completed their interviews. It was told to all three candidates that, you know, we would be hearing something within the month, he kinda wanted to have it filled by the end of the month, you know, not the end of the month, within a month timeframe. And as I stated earlier, when I was addressing Mr. Donahue, we were made aware of all the changes. And right now, I'd like to call firefighter Richard Frost, and he will testify that in his interview, he heard the same thing.
Mr. Frost?
Yes.
If you'll raise your right hand.
Yes.
Uh, do you swear and affirm that you tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Could you please state your name for the commission?
Richard Frost.
Thank you.
Sorry, I kinda, was it off the normal, what, do you want me to, to say?
About your interview, the initial interview, what we heard as far as timeframe and the changes, the possible changes we had made in Chapter forty?
We, uh, I interviewed Chief Positsch, uh, some of the things he brought up was that he didn't want to, uh, he was thinking about making it a rank position that would not change, would not be promoted, uh, to be a set pay, those were some of the ideas he was tossing around. And then, uh, what else, yeah, we talked about, as far as changes come down the road. And again, as he stated, he wanted to try to, try to get filled with month, I vaguely remember, uh, he gave a timeframe of like mid-September at the time. Thank you.
Before, uh, Mr. Frost, do any of the members of the commission have questions for Mr. Frost?
I have none.
I guess just one, did, did anybody communicate to you that, uh, the chief didn't consider you suitable for the position?
The only communication I've had about the fire marshal's petition directly was an email about three weeks ago, or two weeks ago, advising that there, there was a problem resolution, and that he had wanted to have this position filled. Other than that, I've had no direct communications with anybody about the position.
So, so nobody communicated that to you? So, does that mean the first time you heard that was today?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Frost?
Yes, sir.
The, uh, if you could turn to page six of.
Sure. Can you turn it? Yes.
The package that was provided by Mr. Teasley. What fire crew are you on, sir?
Uh, fire crew one.
Would you have seen or heard of this document that was emailed by?
That he would want to? Uh, yes, sir, I have. I should've stated personally, directly to, I didn't say as a group, that I would consider this as a group. This is put out as a group. Personally, no person-to-person contact that has been made, and this also doesn't have direct anything that I'm not qualified.
Right.
Which also, I believe, was his question.
Right, and I was just, I, I, I understood that nothing was sent to you directly, but I just wanted to make sure that you had seen this.
And if you'd like me to answer the question, any open, uh,
any open, sorry, email that was put out, yes. But again, to my recollection, that's the only other email that I can recall that was an open, that was regarding the position, sir.
Would you have seen this email sometime in the January 2012 timeframe?
Yes, sir.
And then, if you could look at page five, which is Chief Positsch to Mr. Teasley?
Yes, sir.
Did Mr. Teasley discuss this email with you sometime after it was sent to him by Chief Positsch?
I'm not seeing that, I did not know about this email until roughly the same time that the resolution was put in. And at that time, I did have it, because he called to advise me that he had put in a resolution for it.
With his name on it, yeah.
And put my name on it. So he wanted to let me be aware of what was going on. At that time, he mentioned that he had emailed the chief. I didn't see it. He just mentioned that he had emailed the chief back in September about the position. And was so roughly, I couldn't quote you what was said, but that he'd emailed the chief and it would be two weeks. That's for, that was late May, mid-May, whatever. I was on vacation, that's all I remember. I was in Florida when he called me, so.
One other question, did you ever call Chief Positsch or ask anyone in the Fire Department questions about when the assignment to the Fire Marshal?
No, they're not.
Those are all the questions I had. Thank you very much, Mr. Frost.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this point, we've had the interviews. Middle of September come around. I did email Chief Positsch on page five, you can see, asking him, you know, when, you know, what kind of timeframe, checking in on status, you know, like anybody interested in a position would do. And it was told, no, not yet, Joe. Probably a couple more weeks with all I have going on. Okay, enough said. I'm not gonna question him. He's got a lot going on, so. No other correspondence personal with the chief. We did receive the email January 18th as a department. However, this email, I've looked it over several times. I never see, I never see that it was canceled and gonna be reposted. I see it's been held up. The process has been held up due to the changes to Chapter 40 that are gonna be implemented. You know, held up means you stop it in place and then you continue on. That's my take on it. So never does the word's canceled, we're gonna repost come about in any of these.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. Let me interrupt.
Now we're into May. And we get another job posting email. The filling of the Fire Marshal position was delayed until relevant amendments were made to Chapter 37 and 40 in the city ordinance. And once again, you know, if this is an interpretation, I looked it up in the dictionary. It really doesn't give a great answer for delay. But you know, when anything is delayed, it's kind of stopped in place and then picks back up and resumes when you start over again, when you're ready to address it. As I stated with Mr. Donahue, I feel like, I feel like they could've brought all three candidates back in and said, hey, you know, we had to wait on it. We were saving money by not paying the salary. We understand that. We understand everybody's budget crunch. But we wanted to get you back in here and see if your interest was still where it was a year ago. That's partially the way I would've handled it. So at that point, I filed the problem resolution. I went ahead and I reapplied. I have since re-interviewed. And I believe someone, I can't remember who it was on the panel, asked how many applicants applied on the next time around. We were told in our interview that there were four, four applicants. Myself, Richard Frost. Sergeant Barnett did not reapply. There was a guy from the Public Works, I think that was mentioned earlier, that applied. And Randy, you said that it was put out through the city externally, you know, for all departments to apply?
Yes.
Okay. We were also informed during this interview that one outside application had been accepted. I don't know who that is. But I know that the job was not posted outside the city. Is that correct, Randy? It was just posted inside the city government?
Yes.
So now I ask you, how do you get an outside resume? When it's posted, you know, internally? These are some of the major issues. My big thing is with the deadline. You know, this is what I was taught as a kid. Somebody tells you to do something, by a certain time, you do it. That's all there was to it. You get the job done. If there's a deadline set forth, if I'm told to go do something when I'm on shift tomorrow, and they say, man, I need this done by 5:00 o'clock, I better have it done. I better not come in at 6:00, 7:00, 8:00, 9:00, and go, eh, I still don't have it done. You know, that's gonna be on me. I just don't believe that we should be accepting or reposting a position after we've met a deadline from a year ago. Not to mention all the, you know, the sacrifices that were put in. I had gone after the last interview that we had from the first posting. I mean, I had gone and I have gotten my degree for that job. I thought it would look better if I could present one. I just finished that yesterday, as a matter of fact. I went, I got the Fire Inspector One certification that's on the job description. I got the Fire Inspector Two certification that's on the job description. You know, so therefore, Randy is right that people do better themselves in a year's time. But that's something I could've also conveyed in a re-interview. You know, I could've said, hey, you know, I'd like to update my resume. I've got these changes, these certifications that go right along with this job. And if you can turn to the Fire Marshal Job Classification, page two and three of 2011.
With page numbers?
That is page two, I'm sorry, two and three. You can see that education, is graduation from high school or equivalent. Everybody that works in the Fire Department has that. Four years related experience. All three candidates had that. You know, all three of us had been here longer. I, myself, I've been here almost 10 years. College-level courses in fire science preferred, but not required. I had college-level courses at the time in fire science. And I cannot speak as far as Richard and Kenny, or Sergeant Barnett, as far as any college they might've had. I just know about what I had. Education, additional experience will substitute for education year-to-year basis. You know, special requirements at the bottom. Must obtain within 12 months of appointment and maintain certified Kentucky Fire Inspector Level One and Two status. Well, you don't have to have that to get the job. You have to get it within the 12 months of being in it. Must possess at a minimum certification of Kentucky Instructor Level One or obtain within 12 months. So there's another one that can be obtained in 12 months. Must possess and maintain Kentucky firefighter certification. So that's one that you gotta have right now. You gotta have that to get the job. Well, everybody that works for the Fire Department has their Kentucky firefighter certification. They have to. And then must have good written and verbal communication skills. So once, that's just to back up Randy's point. We all had the minimum requirements for the job. So, you know, if we weren't adequate for the job and that was relayed to City Manager Goins, it was relayed to the Human Resources Director, you know, these are guys, just, they're not gonna get it. Why weren't we notified? And why couldn't you, why couldn't you just say, just don't even bother putting in again, you know? And that's just a spec, you know, you could talk that either way. I mean, I can see Randy's point on it, that people change. I did. But once again, I would've just re-interviewed the three guys. We met the deadline. Nobody else put in for it. Nobody wanted it. And then to change it and repost it because the pay went up. And that's the only thing that changed. If you look at these, somebody asked if there was any changes. If you look at the job posting, at the job classification from 2011 and 2012, you can pull them up and you can see that they were brought up on the same computer. And the only thing that was changed was the pay grade and the date. And that's it. They are word for word identical. Nothing changed. Not one thing. Pay grade and the date of the classification. That's it.
Promotion policy? Would you consider that a subsequent change? The inability to...
As far as, it's not written in the job description. But yes, it is a change that was made on the new Chapter 40. But that, once again, we were made aware of that in the interviews. So we knew that was coming. And from my knowledge, nobody withdrew their name from the application process. And we talk about appointment. You know, I know it's an appointment. But the thing is, in my opinion, when you open it up and you take, you post it internally, you accept resumes, you set a deadline, you interview, that becomes a process. It becomes an application process at that point. And then it's just like any employer. They pick the best one of who applied and give them the job. You know, if they fail when they're in the job, that's all they'll, you know, that you failed once you were in there. You pick the best of what you have in front of you. So these are some of the major issues. In Chief Positsch's initial response to my problem resolution, which is on, it's in the packet from the problem resolution form packet. It's three pages back, I believe. He states in the first paragraph, "It would've been problematic to fill the position under the previous salary and limitations, only to change those areas after the position was filled." It doesn't give a reason why. It doesn't say why it would've been problematic. I think that you could've done a reclassification on the job once somebody was in it. I mean, we've got a definition of reclassification on the index of page 16. We've got a definition back here that says, "A change to a position by assigning the position to a different job classification due to a change in the duties and responsibilities of the position or to correct an error in the original classification." These definitions are in there for a reason. They're to explain and give a little clarity on terms. So to me, I don't know if we've reclassified any jobs in the past. That would be a question for Mr. Donahue. Would I? It would've made sense to do that, in my opinion. The city commission's decision to overturn their original decision and test the promotional process under the old Chapter 40 revisions, I believe, has the precedent here. You know, it's, we can argue and say that it's an appointment, but initially, it is a promotion. We've shown that already. It is a promotion. The resolution of my problem that I am seeking tonight is not, you know, I don't wanna be up here sounding like I'm the one that's gonna get the job. It's not what I want. My resolution is, I want the three candidates that originally applied for the position to be the only candidates for this position. And that the chief must select one of those candidates. We met the deadline. We did everything that was asked of us. You know, we've sat there for a year. We've taken classes. We've gotten, you know, gotten education, gotten training, all because we were still in the hopes that we were gonna get this job. We just knew it was delayed. But somebody, one of the three, was gonna get it. And that's what I feel is right. That's why I'm standing up here today. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Just for the record, I have no further questions and we need to move to deliberations. Any rest of questions?
I have no questions.
No questions?
You have questions, Commissioner Moore?
Just two, I think. I guess the first question isn't for Mr. Teasley. It would be for Randy or the city manager. Or the commission. Somebody remind me, the provision that this job has to be filled from within if practicable, that was changed. That's in the changes, right? Did that provision get withdrawn? So now, now there's no provision saying that this position should be, needs to be filled from within if practicable? That's just to the best of my memory.
It was changed. It was changed.
Can Randy confirm?
If you wanna confirm that.
The word in 40.36 changed. But both the old one and the new one says that the position can be filled from outside or inside. But I think maybe the word practical.
Practicable.
Practicable. Practicable, you're right. Yes, that word in that sentence is not in the new ordinance, but it was in the old ordinance.
So there's nothing that says, in the new ordinance, there's nothing that says the position shall be filled from within if blank? There's nothing that puts a priority on filling it from within?
I don't think there really, well, if, no. In the new one, it doesn't say. It says, "At the discretion, it may be from within or outside."
Does anybody know what practicable means?
It means the same thing, if reasonably possible.
If reasonably possible. So could it be synonymous with suitable? If the candidates were considered unsuitable by the decision-maker, would it therefore be unpracticable to appoint them?
Well, I think that if you had candidates and that's worked for the city and, you know, it's a reasonable likelihood that they'll do a good job, then, you know, they should, at least in the old ordinance, they were gonna be given priority. And I think certainly part of reasonably possible that they're gonna do, probable that they're gonna do a good job, I think suitable probably fits into that somewhere.
Mr. Moore, do you have a copy of the Personnel Policy Handbook in front of you?
I do not.
Okay, section?
I do have the, well, I do have Personnel Policies and Procedures.
Okay, yes, that's what I'm referring to. If you'll look for, at section 2.1, it addresses internal job postings and candidates that are qualified from within the city shall be given preference.
It says, "When qualified internal candidates having the required skills and experience emerged, preference may be given to those candidates."
Yes.
And then it lists different...
Subsections, yeah.
Right, factors. Who have a satisfactory performance record, who have a satisfactory attendance... Who have a satisfactory performance record, who have a satisfactory attendance record, who have a minimum of six months in their current position, who are confirmed employees. Those are procedures for filling non-public safety positions in that specific position. But I, you know, I think we're kind of splitting hairs here for no reason, just because I, it's always been my experience at the city that, all else being equal, if you have one candidate who's a current employee, and you have another candidate who's not a city employee, that the city employee would get the position.
Well, that's what I'm getting at. And that's all things being equal.
Right.
The original provision, kind of threw the all things being equal out the window, and says that as long as the city candidate is suitable for the position, or practicable for the position, then they shall be appointed, period.
These positions shall be filled from within the ranks of the fire department if practicable through established personnel selection procedures. So if you've got someone who's?
Who's suited for the job, who could reasonably be considered to do?
Reasonably suited for the job.
A good enough job, then we shall hire them.
Right, and a ridiculous example, but one that's, I guess could be used as an example, is if we had a basketball team, and we needed a center, and the only guy in the city that applied for the position was five foot six, we may go outside the city to look for our center. And that's a ridiculous example, but, you know, in this particular case, I certainly can address the suitability of these individuals for this position, but they certainly did meet the minimum qualifications.
I don't think there's any, yeah, I don't think there's any denying that all the candidates were qualified for the position. The chief made the determination that they weren't suitable for the position. And under the old chapter 40, it would have been hard-pressed to not hire one of them. It's hard not to, I mean, I guess I've got a question of the chief, because it's hard not to?
I'd like to request it. I mean, I think we've got ample information from the chief in terms of, you know, the process that he went through on this particular instance.
I guess I would like a confirmation or clarification that lots of reasons were given to different people, that we, that this process, this hiring process needed to be delayed for one reason or another. It seems that one of the reasons was that the candidates, the decision-maker felt that the candidates weren't suited to the position. Lots of reasons were shared with the candidates, but that reason was not shared with them. It was withheld from them. Looking at all this from a distance, it seems, I think it's very clear that the chief wanted the ability to hire somebody other than these candidates. I think, I think we can glean that from all the information we've seen. So the question is, did the delay boil down to making, delaying the decision until after this clause change saying that it shall be filled from within? Was that a factor in the decision? And that's the question I have for the chief, is, was that clause a factor in this delay? I think it's a fair question.
Does the commission want to hear that?
Pete, I'm ready to move into deliberations at this point. I'm ready to move into deliberations, but if the rest of the commission wants to hear that, that's fine.
It's fine if he wants to hear it.
You want to hear it?
Yeah, just that question.
I'll support Commissioner Waller to hear the answer.
Chief, if you'll raise your right hand to swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I will.
Could you please state your name for the commission?
Wallace Positsch.
Commissioner Waller, do you want me to ask a question, or do you want to ask a question?
I can answer, thank you. A number of reasons were given for your decision to delay this hiring process. I guess, first of all, do you want to confirm that you had, you did convey to the city manager and human resources director that you found these candidates, these particular, the original three candidates? Unsuited, or would you use a different?
No, I don't think I ever used the word unsuited. What I have said is, I wasn't particularly enthralled with any of the three original applicants. They all met the minimum qualifications on paper, except for maybe one. The job description says four years related experience. None of the three have any related experience in code enforcement, inspections, that sort of thing. They have firefighter experience, but nothing directly related to the job duties for which we were trying to fill. So I did have some concern about that. I want to make it clear that at no time did I ever say I wasn't going to consider any of the three, or that I wouldn't hire any of the three, or that I would go outside. All those were options, that I may not hire any of the three, or if we don't get a suitable candidate, yeah, we may need to go outside. But I never indicated that to city manager, HR director, or anybody.
So would you or would you not, at that time, have considered them practicable assignments?
That's such a hard question to answer. They met the minimum qualifications, except maybe the one I just described, on the four years' experience. But as I told all three of them in interviews, and have stated regarding filling any position, my goal was to try to fill it with the best qualified person that we had to fill it with. So even when we delayed it for various reasons, some of which have been covered and maybe some which haven't, and the decision made to repost it, that was still my goal, to open it back up to them if they were still interested, and anyone else who may be more qualified, or to expand the pool of qualified people, just to see who I had available to me as an option to fill it, who may be the most qualified.
Thank you. And so all of that leads into the only question that I really wanted to ask, which is this clause that changed that says that the position shall be filled from within if practicable. And you are aware of the fact, obviously, that that clause was gonna be changed in the, within the revisions?
No, I don't think that we even considered changing that wording until probably January or somewhere in it, just to make it a little more clear. I mean, practical is a hard word, so let's throw it out. Let's make it as simple and readable as possible. And we really said the same thing in the new one, we just made it a little more brief. It still says, under the new chapter, "To be filled from within or outside the department." The previous one said basically the same thing. The only difference was it said, "If practical, within, and if not, then you can go out."
I'd say it was a very different.
So the intent, the intent in my mind didn't change.
But, I mean, so the question?
Wow, close session. Because I'd say they're very different. But was that clause, and the change made to that clause, a factor in your decision to delay the hiring until after the new, until after the changes went into effect?
That clause, no.
No.
That's all. Thanks, chief.
Okay, we're ready to start going to more questions, anybody?
I'll move to go into closed session pursuant to 61.810 subsection 1. Because it's, to discuss appointment of personnel.
So, do you have a second? Call roll, please. Commissioner Waller?
Actually, no, I withdraw the motion. And I have a question.
Maybe you don't have to go into closed session.
Yeah, is it, well, yeah, I don't know if we have to or not, and nor do I know if we even can legally, because the question that we're asking doesn't relate to a specific person.
Well, it could relate to a specific person, just because of, I don't know whether all three are still interested in the position.
Sure.
I think with it being a personnel decision, I would be more comfortable going into closed session to discuss.
And if we're gonna discuss a general polit, if the question we're deliberating is whether or not we should overturn this decision to hire, you know, under one deadline or another, a question about a deadline isn't, I guess my point is, I don't know if that's a legal, if that's even legally appropriate.
Yeah, but it's a hiring policy.
We have three options.
It's a policy question, right?
It could be a policy option, if you're, if you're gonna try and indicate who's gonna receive a certain position, then that would be appointment or personnel.
Right. And I'm saying, I don't think that's within our program.
All right.
Or if we had questions about specific things that were mentioned on personnel.